Can we approve the agenda first?
Take the motion to approve the agenda. Is there anybody, well, is there any changes to it? I want to add the one hundred new business.
Okay.
And that's planning that I sent off. Go over. Plan for the solar systems. We're gonna have to start working on that and then we got the master plan now that I see things for getting up to us. Uh, but we're gonna have to start working on that too. We're gonna be able to do a lot, I think, with the rest of our, some part of it until we get this discussion with the engineer, which that's what we gotta go over. So.
I think solar can sit in the back burner for a while too, gross relations.
If we can bring that to a base, we'll hold.
All right, can we get a little the agenda then?
And once we get first two bits.
Anybody else want any, to add anything?
I have a few questions.
What's that?
We got questions?
More than. I need a chapter here?
I don't want to get jammed up. This question, I have reading through things.
Well, okay, well, I'm, you put that out.
I'm trying to keep up. Some of these are questions I can't.
I'd like to add solar to the protest. We have a whole on that before we approve, or is everybody okay with that?
I don't want you to be talking about solar.
All right, so sure we approved, I'll take the motion to approve. And I should, you. Second? Somebody got.
All right.
Motion to approve, or approve to. Hold on, to approve the agenda for the next meeting with the changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All vote. So pass. Down to the parents last month. Is there anything on here that anybody sees that is not correct, or these could be correct?
Um, I'm curious about the fifty members in the sessions. Cause we don't have fifty members here tonight, and I don't think we have as many as we have tonight, is what you're asking.
Oh yeah.
Look at your sign in sheet.
Yeah, that was, and that was according to our sign in sheet.
Okay.
And the sign in sheets are with, I don't list everybody's names, not everybody's friends legibly, because everyone forgot what it was like to be in grade school. And I am not about to start deciphering everyone's name and then have somebody say, you spelled my name wrong. So the sign in sheets just get added in with the minutes. And are on record in the office.
And if it is up here, can you put it ahead?
Yes, please make sure you come and sign in so that we know, so we can track you like the government.
I think that's the last one.
That's what I was just. Plans are done through, I don't see any current. Take a motion to approve, uh, meeting for the last month. Aye. Away to the second head. Approve the second head. To approve the parents for last month. Is this in your favor?
Aye.
Anybody vote? Old business, which started off with, uh, getting our master plan copies.
No. I'm waiting on my.
Thank you for getting that, Dr. Oris.
Yeah. It's a lot, it's a lot easier to read than the paper.
Oh. Anybody got any? Anything that wanted to look on that? We're gonna.
Because the only thing I'm gonna break up is like, I don't know. Ready to start off just till we get.
No, 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 we'll go off this.
I see, okay.
You're gonna go off your master plan, your master plan goes the way the township wants to go.
Okay.
Once you get figured out which way the township wants to go by the master plan, then you'll make your work.
Okay.
Okay? I think it'd be a good idea, uh, to be able to take time to read this. And I, I've read a lot of them before I hand it over my copy to Andy. It's a very important, it's, uh, it's more like it is quite a read.
I was trying to read it on my phone, it's like. So I haven't had a chance to look at one of the pages. I read possibly a lot.
We're supposed to go off the master plan.
Yeah, I remember.
And, you know, that master plan, we should leave, decide which way to go. That's, we're making our laws with our.
I guess what has me confused is that we.
Never had them?
Never had to refer to all this time, and now all of a sudden you want to do a plan, and I'm like, wait a minute, I thought we were doing solar. But now I see what you're talking about, okay.
Used to be going by the good old voyage rules.
Still is. All right, good.
Uh, sound engineers, that's our next, uh, on the list, are sounded, is approved by the board. We need to get them, uh, who we want to think we should send to. I tried to find that one, I did. You had a couple too, Danny?
Yes.
You had some pricing for it too?
They're the same price as the ones that from Grand Rapids. They're the, they're both two hundred dollars an hour for a consult, and.
They sent something back to me, that they gave me a copy of the one that I sent them?
No.
I looked at it for a bit.
You gave it to him by another.
Yeah, I give them to them at the board meeting. But, uh, they also had that in there, whether you wanted a true engineer that would break it down to a subject, you wanted a true engineer to come in. Roger, I didn't speak up a long, I haven't come in yet. Okay, I'll try. They had one for the consultant, they had one for the engineer. They had a few different ways to go broke down, so that it would be a zoning kind of deal.
Yes.
Uh, you know, who did you want to talk to, did you want to talk to the engineer, or did you want to talk to a consultant? However it worked out, we all basically know the same things that we want to find out. It's just a matter of who's who we wanna. Get on this.
She sent that information out today or yesterday.
Well, and then it was a couple months ago as well.
Wow, this one?
Yeah, same stuff, over again.
Yeah, I looked at one up online.
Um.
Internet.
Randy.
Yep.
I don't, just reading over his stuff seems pretty thorough and explaining and whatever. I don't understand all of it, but that's why.
He brings it down to similar terms.
Right.
So I guess if that's what you're looking for, then.
I didn't see anything in the other one, it just looks to me like pretty good.
And to me, I, I really don't have preference as long as they're third party. You know, they're not for when, they're not against, and that is why I kinda thought this one. A V D. Cause they have nothing to do with any kind of, uh.
Any of those.
Right, they don't have nothing to do with any buildings, any preference, they're just a acoustical. Engineer that does the testing, and then they would tell you whatever they find, they don't care.
Right. And that's the same with the one that I have presented.
Yeah, this one here.
So what has said, I don't care.
Forty-two years of experience doing it.
Now, where was he out of?
He's out of Maine.
Yeah.
But he goes all over the country. Doing, did sound engineering for different entities. And different types of things, so.
So it was kinda what, A V D, I think was the one, the name of the one? At A V D Engineering, and then yours was?
Robert Brand.
So it's down to them too, right?
Yes. So we just need to figure out which one we'd like to have, and then we can.
Does anybody got any questions? Anybody else got any preference?
And why is that?
Because from what I understand, Robert Brand works with public artists and that one.
And yours works with. Well. Yes, he does. You don't know that. You don't know that.
That's just your opinion, man.
Where would you see that he works?
Can we bring this back to order? Now, it's not public opinion right now. We're trying to get a debate going, if you can let us debate, I don't know. Just be fair. We're trying to be. Yep. Everybody know more out there, so I'll ask you to leave. Not a problem. So. Do you want to continue on with your reasoning?
That was my reasoning. I cannot.
How did you find out that it had something to do with public?
Yeah.
It's in my papers, I'm in some place, and I cannot find it.
Okay, so.
But there is something that I had found. Maybe goes, oh, I don't know, lot, third party, or third, uh, yeah, third.
Yeah, that's.
Third party, yeah.
Somebody that is.
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at it, is I'm looking at his resume. Of third partiness of everything that he's done, and he's, I mean.
Right, so, are we trying to look at it?
What?
I didn't get to print it off today.
Oh.
Can I just look at it?
Yep, I mean, you look at it, and look at the different projects that he's worked on across the country. Very knowledgeable. And we're just looking for somebody to explain terminology, I don't think it matters.
Okay, the other question I had is if we do it Zoom. Forgive me, I don't know how all this works. Do we come here and assume it?
Yes.
Yeah. Where have you been and something?
But we have no internet.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Cause that's why I'm like, how are you gonna assume it, is what I understood.
And what it's called is I have a three hundred foot ethernet cord that will be hooked up into the, uh, uh, office, run out here to my computer or a monitor. We'll plug it in, bring it up on Zoom.
You have a laptop?
Yeah, I don't know about that, okay, that makes more, that makes more sense.
Not difficult.
Okay, so.
And I have an additional monitor, so that we can vote two monitors, so that everyone can see.
Okay, sounds good, okay.
Hey, nice when we get here.
Sorry, I'll try to project my voice out back.
It's not just you, but, um, no. We're working on trying to get a P A system. Or yeah, I, I get one through us, and so hopefully we can get something rolling. They're talking COVID money, maybe person incident.
Seventy-five dollars, okay.
I think the one was a hundred and fifty, the other was two hundred and sixty. Smarter speaking up. I have no problem speaking up. We'll try to speak up.
I haven't seen any information on the other one, this guy, the information I got reviewed, what's that? It looks good to me.
Oh, sorry. So.
And then, yeah, so I, I think we'll have to do something with a special meeting, all right? So we're gonna have to go through the boards, we'll have to let the board know who we want to use.
No, actually, the jury told us to pick who we wanted, so we'll just choose.
Right, right. Pick who we want, but we still got our house, because even, well, it's a special meeting, it's still gotta be a public speaker.
Yes.
So it's gotta be an ounce book fifteen days in four years.
Seventy-two hours. Seventy-two hours, we can call a special meeting at any time, has to be posted in the window, and then we can do additional posters.
Okay.
I looked all this up in the bylaws before I came.
Okay, that's what I was kinda wanting, was, you know, cause it's nice to have the Robert's rules, but then you gotta go back to the bylaws to see how it's supposed to read, because not your bylaws go with your Robert's rules, Morgan.
If even one of the companies that we cheese, they have. Our client presentation, is that something we can be able to get handouts, copies of?
If he does one, yeah, I mean, I guess.
If they did, yeah, I don't know.
What he'd have to do is probably email it to us, and then we'll just make, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Taxes for.
Well, we would need to know what questions we'd like to ask him, so he can prepare those things ahead of time.
Right. I think a lot of them is gonna be like the L P N, the L M A X, uh, you know, we've gotta, gotta come up with some sort of agreement where we want to say.
What questions we wanna ask them? You know, definitions and stuff.
Yep.
It kinda goes through that.
I always kinda had the wave pattern there. Um. And I guess it's a, it's a level preference too. I mean, one person might think forty-five dollars is a wow, or another person thinks it's barely noticeable, you know what I mean? So, um, so like to enter a motion, or entertaining motion, to go with the Robert Brand, um, sound group. If anybody wants to make their motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we can have a consult with Mr. Robert Brand, um, at a special meeting date, once we determine when he would be available, and we, we'll have to give seventy-two hour notice of when that special meeting is, and it will be held via Zoom.
Okay, to make that a little longer, Robert Brand with a special meeting. Be further discussed.
Once we find out what his schedule is, and then we can.
So, uh, we got a motion for using Robert Brand?
I'll second.
Do we get a vote on this, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Vote?
Aye. No, whatever.
Uh, order has, uh, the motion has passed, we will go with Robert Brand.
Michelle, how did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so, we're just gonna have to kinda put that on the table until we get more information from him.
I will email him tomorrow and ask him a date, and then I'll send out.
Can you send that out as soon as you get a reply?
Yep, and as soon as I get a reply, I will send out dates for everybody, so we can get a meeting structure happening. Next was the survey. That we're talking about, and I included a list of questions.
Yeah, seven of the ones right here.
Yep.
Township survey. Would you be interested in township providing water access? Would you be interested in township providing parks and or trails? Would you be interested in township providing public hunting land? Should the public be responsible for the ordinance enforcement of abandonment of residential properties? Clean up and removal of abandoned vehicles and junk. Should the township offer county trash pickup and recycling? Do you have any security concerns with the township? Are you comfortable with responsive heated? Familiar with services? And you know the local, the location of emergency services? Seven would be leadership in the township, we know how to access services or departments, or to get information in different departments such as building permits, land use, fire regulations, and the local location of the township office. Eight would be what future land use should be considered within the township, agricultural housing development, industrial, et cetera. Would you support restrictions on winter? Would you support restrictions on solar? Would we wanna, I like that nine and ten. Okay.
Would that, yeah, I would say those.
I would say, should we, you, we shouldn't say support restrictions, we should say either support or restrict wind energy, or support or restrict.
If we're gonna use a scale of.
Yeah, you know.
Strongly agree to disagree.
Right.
If I take the word restrictions out, that you support on solar or wind, it's either a.
Yes or no, yes, highly support.
Yes, or no, or scale one to ten, yeah.
So are you, uh, wanting to amend those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Is there anybody that wants to support the amendment of nine and ten by removing restrictions?
I, if you're gonna do a scale of one to five, I guess I, yeah, that would make sense.
That's what I thought.
All support?
Kind of like, yeah, okay, I support.
I support.
Yep, me too.
Yep.
Yeah, fine.
So unanimous on that, we'll change that?
Yep.
Just gonna cross them all?
Yeah.
Is that enough for too many, or what, higher survey?
I think that, I think that's a good start, because now we're getting into, we gotta make deals, what?
Especially if you do this one.
The land, water master plan, a lot of this pertains to our master plan. So with our master plan, we're only in the direction that the people wanted to be.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, this is going backwards, because this should have been done before the two thousand nineteen.
Before the ma- master plan.
Master plan was revised, but I guess better late than never.
But I think we need to see what the people feel.
Yes.
The corrections are looking at.
You know, and maybe we.
Especially if we're gonna be starting solar energy, at least we'll be ahead on that one.
Well, and I think it also gives you a better access, a better knowledge of what's going on within the township itself.
Right.
Now, I, I guess, uh, I got a question on would you be interested in the township provided water access? What you talking, like city water?
I don't know, Doug, so.
Or are you talking about like recreational?
Recreational.
I think maybe that oughta be a little clearer too, if.
But provided recreational water access, recreational.
Okay, so we'll change that, everybody in agreement?
Yep, yes.
I mean, with everything going on, you know, trails, everyone liked, you know, everything, I don't think, you know, we need to address it and look at it and see what's.
Well, and.
What's doable, and there's some of it's not doable, or whatever.
We're sending the survey out to the public, we wanna know what they have to say.
Yeah, yeah, you know, get the feel, get the pulse of the community.
Let, let's, uh, let's make it so that they, they understand it as we would want to understand it too, so.
We understand it.
Now, by interested in, uh, the township providing parks and or trails, are you saying additional? Should we put additional in with that?
To the parts that are already.
Yeah, which is our, our. Well, I know this park here is supposed to be taken care of by the road.
It is.
Yes.
Really?
Yep. But that don't happen.
Well, then.
There's no funds for it, I guess.
Would there be any way, because who supports the water treatment?
Well, we've got our local community that, like, there's a few of them, Steve Kane, uh, the Chambers, they're the ones that came and they painted the, the basketball court, they painted up all the, uh, the powder swing and stuff like that. So there is a little community support that actually keeps the upkeep on the park. Along with the overarching.
I guess I'm not sure if he does the water treatment, if it's the chamber or if it's township.
I think the ballpark is the township.
I'm not talking ballpark, I'm talking park by park.
It's still a park, it's ballpark.
Oh yeah, there's basketball there, okay.
So you've got that, that is taken care of by the township, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, because they have to pay to have the little plon mode and whatnot, so.
So why isn't the township taking care of Corals?
Got me there.
I think it's normal fair that township takes on Corals also, especially since somebody from Coral's already doing.
Peterson Park, I'm not for sure on that one, cause Peterson Park right there by the fire barn.
That's the one I'm thinking of as a park, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be, I think, taken care of by the road commission too, but it's supposed to be taken care of by the road commission. Usually there's a sign, somewhere in the park that said that it's taken care of by the road commission, like I've got the road commission. They're usually the ones that handle the parks.
Cause they have a mowing service that comes in, if the town, or if the county's taking care of it, the county should be mowing though.
May have one.
Yeah.
Or maybe it should be brought up Monday night at the board meeting.
That, yeah, they're like, oh, the road commission's around five o'clock.
Well, and that's a good question, because as far as I know, it is taken care of by road commission. There's been a part, the sign up there, used to be when I was a kid anyway, I don't know if it's changed from that, but I don't think, actually, but it's always been, the community has basically took care of the park.
No, that is a dinosaur road.
So do we wanna add additional?
We can add additional or maintain, but I think there's a couple questions that obviously were brought up, that Penny said that, and perhaps, you know, maybe the board needs to answer a few things before we, uh.
Before we move on that one, so.
I'll figure out something tomorrow before Monday, I'll call the road commission and, uh.
All right.
Who is in charge of the chamber or four, you know? Anybody?
Maybe they don't.
Oh, maybe they don't.
They don't, as far as I know.
Maybe the troop of chamber would know. All right, I'll see what I can figure out.
That's something we can never figure out either, you got a troop in, uh.
Chambers?
Chamber cameras. But there's nothing for both, you know, why, if the same township, why wouldn't you wanna get all the businesses together to support each other?
I agree, that doesn't make sense to me either.
What were my decisions?
Um, I would say number three, I, I wouldn't put it on there, because we're gonna be limited on space.
I don't think they got any state land to actually.
I don't believe we have any state land that's accessible, so I would say just.
Take that one out?
That's my thought. I love, I love number four, because I feel that that's something.
My only question on number four is that, yeah, I agree that we should, because obviously the sheriff's department's not. Um, for those of you that wonder, should the township be responsible for the ordinance enforcement of abandoned residential properties? Clean up, removal of abandoned vehicles and junk? My question on that is since the sheriff is not, if the township were to be responsible for it, with some of, I don't know how to put this politically correct, so, some people get rather ratty about their stuff. I don't want anyone from the township coming under fire.
It would be the zoning administrator.
It's defined as what is, you know, abandoned and junk and whatever, so they're enforcing what's in there, they're not.
Okay, this, people get all bent out of shape about things, and I don't want anybody to get hurt. You know, I mean, whether it's the township zoning guy or whoever.
You know, I think that was just amended, cause, uh, that was two thousand, or section two oh seven.
In master plan?
No, no, in our, our ordinance book.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was supposed to go to the township zoning administrator, and then to the township supervisor before. And now it goes to the township zoning administrator, that gets, uh, a complaint made up, and then it goes over to the county. That's the way it's written now.
Oh, okay.
And then the sheriff's department takes care of it, of course.
Okay.
And if they feel threatened, they have every right to call the sheriff's firm for backup.
Right, right.
So.
Well, that's, that's uh, part of the administrator drawing in and saying, hey, you were concerned about the blight in your yard, but.
And that goes for any ordinance that we have, the zoning administrator is the person.
That is supposed to enforce it.
To enforce all of that, so moving on, uh, question number five, should the township offer county trash pick, or it should be offer trash pickup and recycling? I think that's something that.
Well, we still, can we get back to board though, or is, because. We really do wanna find out if we wanna keep that in the township's hands.
Yeah.
Or turn it back over, keep it over to the sheriff's department.
I don't think it's working currently.
No.
It wasn't working when it comes in. They just, they just approved that ordinance last year and I don't think it's.
I heard it was a couple of years, but I don't know, but it's.
It's been enforced very long, uh, I do know when I heard uh, from Mike Williams, that that was, uh, they had just got approved with their, the. Tax million you passed for the sheriff's department, that was to put on two more police officers, and that he's trying to get for the enforcement of the blight, so. Enforcement of the blight, get rid of some methods, I don't care where they put it, just keep doing something on it.
No, I think four should be in there, cause we need to know.
I do too, I do too, do we want, but do we wanna leave it to, should we let the township be responsible, or should it be left to the county? You know what I mean?
I think we should address it as the township and then take the results from there.
Okay, we can always expand from there.
Exactly, if we have questions, then we hold a meeting and ask more questions then.
So that could be brought up there. So leave that in, but maybe, uh.
Cause if we're just, we're doing a scale of one to five, so, and that way they can say, yep, they agree with it, or nope, they disagree.
I think it's worth it pretty good for that, I mean, that's understandable.
Yeah.
Uh, should the township offer county trash pickup or and recycling? I don't think you'd want it to be county, would you?
No, I think we would just want it to be trash.
Township. Should the township offer trash pickup and recycling for constituents?
That would be nice. Especially recycling.
Omar Six, do you have any security concerns with the township?
I think we would just probably go on to the bottom of that next question where it says, do you feel comfortable with a response if needed, and that should be maybe just.